Anyone that has a haircut or this like.
No, you look, you're right on target. You're good.
From a small island, shut up.
So am I. Touche. Touche. That was a good one for Arvin Eadie Scott.
Everything's in here.
How do I?
Oh, there's an empty.
Oh, yeah, I got it.
Oh, my.
Am I gonna get in right?
Sure, it was already down here. It should have been open already. I don't know why it wasn't. It looks like someone's.
I call the Committee for Student Life to order.
I'm sure you know where to take it from.
Action item 1A is approval of the minutes from April 24, 2023 meeting. I move for approval of action item 1A.
Second. So moved, yeah?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We now address action item B, Policy Calendar. The action item 1B is a resolution to approve undergraduate student activity increase at Brooklyn College. I know Colin Vice Chancellor Maybank and Assistant Chancellor Yen James to provide background information.
Thank you Chairperson Clark. As required by the Board of Trustees bylaws, Article 16, Section 1612, Brooklyn College held an undergraduate student activity fee increase referendum from March 20 through March 31 of 2023. The current fee for spring and fall semesters is $114.85. The proposed fee increase for spring and fall is $120, an increase of $5.15. The current fee for summer is $78.95, and the proposed fee increase for summer would now be $80 if approved, which is an increase of $1.05. The vote on the referendum, there were total, the total number of students enrolled is 11,120. 456 voted yes, 139 voted no, 244 abstained. Eight percent of the student body voted. The vote on the referendum was 456 in favor, 139 opposed, 244 abstentions. Vice President for Student Affairs Ron Jackson and the undergraduate student government president Aaron Gramma are here to provide more information and answer any additional questions from members of the committee. Aaron and Dr. Ron Jackson.
Good afternoon. I defer the floor to Aaron, the current president of the undergraduate student government, to give an overview of the referendum.
Hi, everyone. That's quick. Oh, can you hear me? Testing? Okay. Please go easy on me. I just got a 60-second kind of like alert that I'm gonna be speaking.
Can we turn them?
It's supposed to be on. Can you hear me now? Okay. So I'm gonna try to go through very quickly the referendum and the main bullet points that we have. So in 2019, that was the previous referendum that came to the board. We had two governments at the time. We had CLAS and SGS. Those two, those two student governments were basically for evening students and day students. Brooklyn College then did a referendum and we decided to merge both of these student governments and make it USG, the undergraduate student government. However, when that happened, we didn't anticipate some issues that would happen with that referendum that we did and some of the issues that we had are being addressed in the current referendum that we're bringing forward. So, for example, one of the earmarks that we had was for a newspaper, and the newspaper was for evening students. However, that newspaper no longer exists. Students, however, are still earmarked that $1. They continue paying every semester a dollar. They get earmarked for a newspaper that doesn't exist, is not active, and they continue on paying it. This referendum is supposed to earmark that money and basically return it to the students so they can use it for what they pay for. In addition, we had other organizations that in their constitution, it was basically, it says over there that they have representation from CLAS, from SGS. However, it doesn't specify that USG has representation. What we're asking over here inside the referendum, that USG will gain all the positions that CLAS and SGS had at the time and that we'll acquire it again. In addition to that, we had also some referendum groups. We asked to move it under the allocating body of USG. It makes more sense from our perspective. We've been doing this for three years now, and we've noticed that a lot of the referendum groups were one of the only colleges in CUNY that has this many referendum groups and this many earmarks. And it causes a lot of times double the work because we're utilizing the same office, Central Depository, basically, and everyone has to present their new budget. Instead of going through USG and centralizing the process, it's all split. So that's why we asked to move some of the referendum groups. That made sense to put them under USG, just like in every other CUNY. And lastly, so this is actually gonna be the more bigger part of the referendum. Last, last year when I ran the referendum, I tried to decrease the student activity fee. However, since then.
Should not be platforming racist students and shame on the BOT for throwing one of their students under the bus. We are really outraged by the treatment of Fatima. You caved in.
Excuse me.
For right-wing press, the New York Post.
Excuse me.
Who do you represent? Not CUNY. This is, this is not what CUNY is about. We are opposed to this position that the Board of Trustees, the statement they put out about Fatima. It's outrageous and shame on the CUNY trustees. Shame on the CUNY trustees.
Excuse me. Excuse me.
Shame on the trustees. We stand with Fatima. Shame on the trustees and free Palestine.
Zionism out of CUNY.
Zionism out of CUNY.
Excuse me. The meeting has to go on and I would like to be able to.
Can you guaran, can you guarantee us that the Board of Trustees will revoke his statement and apologize for defaming Fatima?
This isn't a back and forth. We're in the middle of a conducted.
What she did was not a speech. She's being unrightfully smeared as anti Semite.
He's receiving death threats because of your cowardice.
That's inappropriate.
This isn't an appropriate forum for you. This is not a back and forth. This is not a back and forth.
Well, excuse me, excuse me. This is not the forum for that at the moment. We will have enough time to listen to you.
People of anti-Semitism when they're speaking about their landing.
This is not a back and forth.
Excuse me. Excuse me. I, I wouldn't wanna have to ask you to make sure that you guys are out of the room. We wanna listen to all voices, but at the moment, this is not the forum for your grievances. We will listen to that at some other point.
If we publish it in the New York Post, will you actually respond to us?
This isn't a back and forth.
You have a right to report to the New York Post.
Options are inappropriate.
Dumb responses about me.
Comments here.
Can we, can we ask them out, please?
Does CUNY take its lead from the New York Post and from right-wing garbage like a New York Post? Who does it represent, the students and the faculty? We are, we wanna do, or we, who does it represent?
The agenda.
Who does it represent, right-wing sources?
The agenda is written out. This is not a back and forth.
We're on the side of racism. We don't support racism. We don't support the black woman. We are commencement speakers.
Have a nice day.
The CUNY Board of Trustees purports itself to represent CUNY students, faculty, and staff. You do not keep our students safe. You make it where right-wing rags like the New York Post is able to facilitate our students, faculty, and staff getting death threats because they speak out against racism? This is a board. Take a look around you. This is a majority people of colors. But what are y'all presiding over?
It's not appropriate.
You are presiding over people who are getting death threats because they speak out against racism.
This is not, this is not.
Point of order. Point of order is not appropriate.
When you're speaking about a point of order, listen to the experiences of people here in CUNY.
Purport to be a law school student and you don't know point of order.
That racism will not continue. That the CUNY Board of Trustees needs to take a stand to support students who are getting death threats by the New York Post and its readers.
CUNY stands on the side of the oppressed, not the oppressors. It's a shame. Shame on the Board of Trustees. I understand, but people are receiving death threats. Is that that serious?
We do have to ask you to leave now. Thank you for your comments, but we need to ask you to leave.
Inappropriate.
It should be a shame. Shame. Shame on, shame on the Board of Trustees. Shame on the Board of Trustees.
We stand with Fatima.
We stand with Fatima and free Palestine.
Zionism out of CUNY.
Free Palestine. Subpoor your students. I didn't appear, could we?
The letter, that's $500.
Okay, we resume and will the student complete with your statement? Did everyone here got the information that was given?
I think you were talking about the, the actual fee. Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay. So the student fee increase specifically. So we're requesting to increase the fee by $5.15. That increase specifically, where it's going to be going to is a new referendum group that we are envisioning that it will kind of like compete with the athletics, with the physical athletics that we have on campus. The idea is we have an athletic group and they currently get an allocation of $18.40, and we're interested in opening an esports. We've had a few conversations with several organizations and individuals that are, that understand esports and we believe that there might be a future over there inside the esports and bringing it into CUNY. It would be one of the first campuses that has an official referendum group that will support it. And we're hoping that this will attract new CUNY students to enroll into Brooklyn College and they will have facilities and a group to actually, with a coach, to train them, to participate. The groups that we currently have at Brooklyn College are competing already and they're already in the national tier and they win. So that's regarding the $5 increase. The 15 cents, since we have some referendum groups that are going to be eliminated, will be added to the athletics. So there's a little bit of a change in the structure. We wanna give athletics a little bit more money. Right now they're getting $18.40. We wanted to put it exactly to $20. We know that the athletics have also been struggling in terms of budget and we're hoping that that small increase would also help them moving forward. So in total, it would be $120. That's regarding the fall and spring semesters. Regarding the summer semesters, we're talking about an increase of $1.05. That $1.05 would be, $1 would be going to the esports and the rest would be balancing basically the rest that we have over there.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name earlier before.
Aaron.
Aaron, I just wanted to thank you for going through the proper channels. When I was in student government, we had to go through the same thing and merging the two together so I can understand how difficult that would be. Thank you for following the procedure and going through the agenda and doing everything properly. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
So you mentioned more money to CUNY Act for esports. Has there been any conversation with CUNY Act to know exactly how much it would need to make something like that happen, happen compared to all the programming that they already have?
Are you talking specifically for esports?
For the esports part.
Well, we know that it would be a harder task to get all of CUNY to create a program for esports. We don't necessarily know even if CUNY is gonna be ready at the moment for that. We know that there's budget cuts in general and allocating more resources for that is not necessarily something that is a priority. So what we were thinking was to pilot it at least at the moment in Brooklyn College and seeing if it's gonna be successful or not. We have high hopes for that. We have already the teams that are competing and we're hoping that that will bring some kind of attention to the program itself and from there to build on it and basically showcase, hopefully even to CUNY Central, that this is working and this is attracting students. There's more students who are participating in the program, enrolling in Brooklyn College just for that program. We have testimonies already of students who are not leaving Brooklyn College because they have the hope that the esports will be established after they heard about the referendum. We've also heard from last year that students have left and have messaged the student leaders of that esports group and have said, "We left because we had a better program on the West Coast." Currently on the East Coast, we, we don't have any strong esports programs. We're really lacking on this side and anyone who wants to participate in esports usually goes to the West Coast or to other colleges that offer those services.
Another question. So still in the subject of CUNY Act at Brooklyn College, do you have an idea of how they have been spending their fees up to this point? And are you confident that this extra fee is going to be used for the intended purpose?
Great question. So currently, the esports and gaming club are under the USG, under the undergraduate student government. So the undergraduate student government is the allocating body. We've allocated for them a budget at the beginning of the year and we've been granting grants. We call it a grant request process and every time that they needed to make an event, they needed to pay for registration for tournaments, they needed to buy shirts for the athletes that are competing, we provided that as USG. However, we know that that is not a long-term plan to keep on leaving it under USG specifically because the nature of an athletics group is usually very different than regular clubs. So very similar with, with clubs, usually the clubs are serving the student population while athletics, it's more that we're supporting the athletes itself rather than the athletes are supporting the, the students. So that would be the main focus. So in order to change that nature, that's why we thought that the referendum would be the best way to do that. Now, the specific allocation that we decided of $5 for the esports was based on the idea of how many part-time and full-time people they will need in order to coach. So we wanted it to be a kind of like permanent, long-term plan. And the idea is that we'll have a permanent director slash coach that will be the main person over there to ensure that there's continuity and it doesn't change with just a student leader who comes in for a few years and leaves and then everything has to restart from the beginning. Similar idea to how athletics works.
Okay. If I may, Madam Chair, I really appreciate how this resolution really points out exactly where the money is going to go and that opens room for us to keep these different departments and the different programs accountable. And it calls for a good continuity. So I'm in support of this.
Okay. Are there any more discussion on the matter?
Excited to see where it goes further. Bring the East Coast to the map a little bit. So good luck.
You gotta invite us out to the esports tournament.
Let me just ask, is all in favor of the undergraduate student efforts?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Yeah.
Have to move it in second, yeah.
Have to move it and then second.
Yeah.
Yeah, I move, I.
I'll second.
I have the second. I did it all in one big scoop. Thank you very much. Then now will be followed by Vice Chancellor. Can we hear explanation for the graduate? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Your presentation is clear.
Thank you.
So thank you, Madam Chair. And before I provide more information on the resolution for the Graduate Division, I would like to inform the committee that there was an error in the submission of the fee increases for the graduate referendum. Therefore, the new numbers that I will be providing are not reflected in the resolution and the printed resolution that you may have received before the meeting. I would like to share the revised proposed fee for the record and subsequent approval from the committee. As requested by the Board of Trustees bylaws, as required, I'm sorry, by the Board of Trustees bylaws, Article 16, Section 1612, Brooklyn College has held a Graduate Division Student Activity Fee Increase referendum from March 20 to March 31, 2023. The current fee for spring and fall semesters is $75.70. The proposed fee increase would be to the amount of $100.70, an increase of $25. The previous document indicated an increase to the amount of $88.95, which is no longer in the appropriate number. It was from an earlier request that had been submitted. The summer fee remained the same. It was, it is currently $61.45 and the increase would be to $66.45, an increase of $5 for the summer. The referendum vote resulted in 187 votes in favor, seven votes opposed, eight people abstaining, with eight percent of the eligible student body voting. Vice President for Student Affairs, Dr. Ron Jackson, remains. And the Graduate Student Organization President Louis de Meglio. Who has Michael, is it Michael? My favorite. With him. They're here to provide more information and answer any additional questions from members of the committee.
I'd like to turn the floor over to Louis to give an overview of the referendum.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having the Graduate Student Organization here. I'm happy to represent and to talk about this referendum. The Graduate Student Organization is currently at 2,500 students approximately. We're down maybe 40% over the last 10 years. One of the big things that we wanna focus on is recruitment and retention. We want the brand of Brooklyn College to be strong. We want our graduates to be proud and we want to be able to invest more in the ability to help our students make it. We have not had an increase to our student, graduate student activity since 1987. I was less than a year old. So needless to say, it's been a while. And with that being said, we're coming out of the pandemic. We are trying to spread our wings and for the graduate students that really need their fellow grad students to fight for them, we need the financial muscle to do that. All right, we have graduate students, some programs that actually rely on the student activity fee to help their specific graduate programs. We have some amazing programs, amazing students. Just a quick thing to share with you, the Metropolitan Opera had a competition for costume design. Brooklyn College won. All right, I don't know why they don't talk about it, but that happened.
We need to talk.
Yeah, yeah. We need to talk more about our wins. We need to talk more about the amazing things that our students are doing. All right, and that's why it was very important for us to do this this year. All right, the bottom line is this, students, not just at Brooklyn College but in CUNY, we're all just trying to make it. And what we want to do for our fellow students is to be that voice, be their advocate. There are things that Brooklyn College cannot say that we as their student representatives can. Okay, and we wanna work as a team with our faculty, our administration. We're all, we're all struggling and we wanna do our part as the student representation, student government. So I, I know that it's an unusual number. This is kind of a bigger number than usual, but I think since it's been 30 years and since we all know what inflation can do nowadays, we think that the number is appropriate at this time. So I'll leave it there. Well, technically, okay, so the technical increase was the health clinic back in 2009 when the undergrad and grad students both had the $10 increase because of the health clinic, which I was part of when I was in the undergrad CLAS student government. So I remember that increase. But for the student government fee itself, right, that is controlled by GSO. That has not changed since 1987. Yeah. So I hope that provides some perspective. And thank you for your time.
Any question? Go ahead.
So what is GSO currently doing with their fees?
Currently? Good question. So this was our first full year coming out of the pandemic where we had most COVID restrictions lifted. Mainly, we're getting our graduate clubs back on their feet. So for example, some of the clubs that have been active, GDO, which is our graduate organization of directors of theater, all right, they typically require $10,000 to $15,000 and that was before COVID. Okay, and they still need the same amount because of the productions that they perform and do. All right, and our School of Visual Media Performing Arts in particular, they, we have a lot of clubs from, from them alone, just from VMPA. And typically, the Visual Media Performing Arts need funding for those types of productions. So it's not just theater, but the other disciplines as well. For this year, we also implemented a new program where we established liaisons between the Graduate Student Government and the individual five schools. All right, Visual Media Performing Arts, Natural Behavioral Sciences, Education, Compliment School of Business, and Humanities and Social Sciences to build up communication between our deans and our graduate students because we realize that we need to work on communication. It's important that we rebuild our relationships. This is also the first year that Faculty Council officially gave undergrads and grads a seat at the table so that we can have these conversations. So mainly for this year, we have focused on pushing for more graduate activities. There are still some hiccups because CUNY procurement is also going through its own pains and that does affect us. So as much as we want to say that we were able to do 100%, we're still working through the rules because the rules are still being worked on themselves. So for example, typically, we have to get everything in by a certain day. So Central Depository, the Brooklyn College Association, which disperses our student activity fees, has the time to wrap up the fiscal year. But students are students, so they're gonna end up doing things last minute. We, you know, reimbursements are frowned upon, but it's inevitable that these students are gonna have to do these things, right? So I'd like to say that, for example, we allocated money for our analog equipment for the Fear Steam Analog Society, but because of procurement issues, we were not able to push that through. Right, so we're, we're pushing, we're throwing a lot at the wall and we're gonna see what sticks so that we can continue to move the needle and support the graduate student activities. So I hope that answers.
Any other, any question?
So we can expect another increase in 2059?
I, on the contrary.
It's been quite a while.
Yeah, I would say this. It's really important that we show ourselves and Brooklyn College and CUNY that we are investing in ourselves, all right? And the success of every student is paramount, right? So whatever we can do to do it, I mean, honestly, we should be doing more in the area of grant writing. I don't know why we don't do more there, all right? Graduate students, they're doing heavy research and they need to know where the money is because we need the money to make things move. Right, so it's also about educating ourselves and that is a component of this increase too because we need to be able to learn how to do this so then we can bring even more resources to the table, all right? That's, that's the bottom line. I love Brooklyn College, all right? I did my undergrad here. This is my second masters. You know, his mother and I agreed that, you know, maybe, you know, Brooklyn College in the future for him, we'll talk about that, right? But, you know, that'll be his choice, right? But look, this is a magical institution. And, and I also, I also have to tell you, there's pride. There's real pride, okay? One thing you might not know, the person replacing Aaron for undergrad president, she's third generation, Carrie, all right? Third, her grandfather, her parents met at Brooklyn College, and here she is. So I just wanted to put that on the record and give a shout out to Carrie wherever she is because this is the pride that we have and we wanna see this continue, all right? The students deserve it. Brooklyn College deserves it. CUNY deserves it. This is an amazing institution. We wanna do our part.
Okay, let me, as, as a Brooklynite and as one who've invested heavily in Brooklyn College through the years in my public life, I just want to say, so that everybody knows that I'm always open. There are students who could put in $35 and they wouldn't feel it. There are students who come to Brooklyn College that I know that $25 is a big hole in their pocket. They would probably have to walk from East Flatbush to Brooklyn College in order to be able to afford that. So I just wanna put it out there that some students will joyfully be able to do this increase and others won't be able to. So I just want us to think about that and figure out how we can best serve the students to make sure that your goals and objectives are met but that also we're not blowing some holes in the pockets of some students because I know them.
And.
They sound like me, they look like me and you know who they are and I know that they can't afford $25 once in a clip. So I just want us to think about it.
If I may, it boils down to accountability and we need to be able to hold ourselves accountable and to. And we need to be able to hold ourselves accountable and to show what we're doing with it. So at the end of the day, we need to make sure that this is a positive impact on each student.
Yeah, I, I, I'm going to get you.
So is there, does the referendum contain any specific breakdown on how the twenty-five dollars will be used?
So it's, it's straight up graduate student activity and student government. So it's, it's the sole responsibility of the Graduate Student Organization and within the College Association, BCA.
So going back to Trustee Clark's point, how, how is the graduate student government planning to make sure that these fees are used, are used properly? Because I'm gonna take the example of the USG referendum. There was this example of the fees that were allocated to the newsletter equipment that were never used. So how do we make sure that this additional twenty-five dollars, if, if implemented, is actually used for an intended purpose? And what's this very specific great purpose? That would be worth an additional twenty-five dollars to student tuition?
So to the earmarks that were requested to be removed, right? One of them was audit. We don't pay for the audit, right? The College Association does. STEMS, it's been a while since we mailed anything. Newsletter, that is an actual failure, failure of the student government not doing a newsletter. Having said that, we also don't have to print one anymore. We can actually do that online via email, et cetera. In terms of personnel, that's a support staff who's in the office. And currently, the way that it's structured is the GSO is the, the executive, President, Vice President, Secretary, Treasurer are in charge of and responsible for the staffing, right? And so who they hire, who they don't hire, et cetera. And their purpose is to help the grad students file the paperwork, which, there's a lot of paperwork. We, we had a meeting yesterday because, of course, it's two days after graduation and we wanted to hit the ground running. So USG and GSO had a meeting to kick the summer off, to say, what are we gonna do? And how are we gonna plan? So part of it also is taking advantage of this summer and making plans to make sure that come September, we can simply execute. So. So one of the other issues is making sure that the students themselves know, either know what they're doing or know that they can't. So then we, on the GSO side, have the staff to support them. So for example, like I said before about pushing things through procurement, some of these students, they send an email with a receipt, and they're like, okay, can you pay me back, please? And it's like, no, no, there's a procedure, right? And we're talking about graduate students that are working sixty-hour weeks to quote our liaison for VEMPA, Nairobi Otero. It's a lot of work as a graduate student. There, in addition to, and all the other family and friend and work obligations outside of that. I mean, at the end of the day, most students are, are working. And this is the same on the undergrad side, right? The way I see it is if ninety percent of your students are receiving financial aid, that means that ninety percent of them are probably facing other types of hardship. So bringing it back to GSO, our purpose is to make their lives easier so that they can do more. So then when it's time for graduation, this is what's really important to me because I'm also a board member of our Alumni Association. For me, this is a holistic approach because recruitment's important, retention's important. And then what do we do with the alumni who did not have a good experience? What we want to ensure is that when they graduate, that they had a good experience, that they were able to get done what needed to be done so that they could move the needle in their lives. All right, and so seeing it from the alumni perspective, I want to make sure that more students have a positive impact and say, Brooklyn College helps me when I needed them. And GSO needs to be part of that. Because we all know CUNY is understaffed, overworked, budget cups up the wazoo. I understand this year it felt like, oh, are we cutting through the bone now? Because I know we already cut to the bone, and then we're... Students need support. GSO needs to step up and help them. This is a matter of sustaining the legacy of our programs. If we cannot support our grad students and they vote with their feet, they're not gonna come back. And then enrollment declines, and then we have less money for our departments. So the bottom line is that we need to actually be part of the solution, all right? Recruitment, retention. I mean, I, I've always thought that this was something that was important to all of us, right? Faculty, they care about our students, but they need the resources. If we don't have the students to chip in, they can't do as much.
I have a comment, Madam Chair?
Yeah, yes.
So one last comment. So I have heard a lot of things that GSO is helping and is intending to help with. I've heard paperwork, staffing, some academic programs, some liaisons to make students' lives better. I would suggest that some of these specific things be earmarked because when it's earmarked, then it opens up a door for accountability in the future. And I would feel more comfortable with earmarked things set in stone so that whatever the administration is, whoever comes in, we know exactly what's going to happen. Because like you said, CUNY is understaffed, there are a lot of things happening. So we are not really a hundred percent sure how things would be moving in ten years from now. But what we are sure is that some of these things are affecting our students right now. So that's what I wanted to say.
Is, is there a way that you can scale it in a way that those students who are unable to afford a twenty-five dollar increase, that they be considered for other, other... And how, how, I, I am just more concerned about a student that I know. I have a, I have a grandson at Brooklyn College in the graduate program. And if he didn't have old grandparents who can help to line his pocket, he probably wouldn't be able to afford it, just teaching. And then trying to get to Brooklyn College after his classroom. I don't know that he'd be able to afford it if he didn't have grandparents and parents who could help him. So for him, maybe putting in twenty-five dollars, he said, Grandma, I need twenty-five dollars, or Grandpa, I need twenty-five dollars, or Auntie, I need twenty-five dollars. And just so he doesn't look bad, we will probably roll it in. But how about the other students who don't have additional support? And all of a sudden, I have to pay twenty-five dollars additional?
Madam Chair, not every graduate student actually pays their student activity fee. There are specific programs within Brooklyn College where students are exempt. So, so there is some relief for those students specifically in the School of Education. So for example, teaching collaborative or teaching fellows, those students through a contract with CUNY don't have to pay those fees. Approximately five hundred out of the twenty-five hundred students. So that means actually the student activity fee is only coming from two thousand students. And so we also have to recognize the fact that not every student is actually throwing in, which is okay because this is something that was planned ahead. Secondly, in terms of undergrad versus grad, there are fewer resources for graduate students, financial aid-wise, scholarship-wise. It's just a fact. When you go to graduate school, you are expected to pay or to take out loans. There isn't a lot of support for grad students. So when people go to grad school, they know ahead of time that it's not like there's money out there for them. The under, I, I, whenever I hear someone who says they did not finish their undergrad degree yet, I tell them, that's a good thing because there's still money out there for you. Once you graduate with your bachelor's, that's it. A lot of those financial aid doors close, right? So we need to figure out, how do we get more money coming into the table, onto the table for the grad students for their programs? Right, and that's also why we need to figure out, how do we do this grant writing? How do we, how do we emphasize to these programs, how do, how they can get these funding, all right? One thing that we actually are lucky at Brooklyn College, grad students do not pay for our Career Center. The undergrads do, okay? So most of the Career Center budget, thank you undergrads, because the grad students benefit. If we paid what they're paying, we would have to pay an extra fifty thousand dollars just to match their percentage, right? So the thing is, like, we're all, we're all kind of helping each other out here. The career, the Magner Career Center at Brooklyn College helps a lot of students. And we're in talks with them to see if we can provide additional funding. They requested from GSO, assuming that if this goes well here, that they're asking twenty-five thousand dollars from us so that we can help them cover two part-time support staff positions, all right? That would be focused specifically on graduate students, all right? So that right there is another way that, that's another solution that needs to be ironed out, right? So it's, there, there's, there's a lot that needs to be done. We're, we're coming out of this, we know that there's a lot of work to be done. And I understand your point, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I just, I just want to ask, did the graduate sent students figure out a way in which they could write for grants? Look at where there may be federal, local, other dollars apart from burdening the student?
Yes, we, and, and.
Who have, who have you looked at?
So at Brooklyn College, we have Todd Galitz, who's our Vice President for Institutional Advancement. There are resources within the school that we can tap into and make those types of requests for education. So for example, asking Todd, hey, I think you have one or two grant writers. Do you think we can do a workshop? Last week, I happened to see at our Student Center, grant writing workshop. And I was like, whoa, what is this? I didn't know what it was. So I went upstairs, turns out it's a grant writing workshop for faculty. I'm like, well, I'll have to charge it later. Give me a second. So these are things where communication is also important because it would have been nice to know about that. Now, there were a couple of graduate students at that grant writing workshop, but they were there in the capacity of being adjunct faculty, right? So these are things that we need to continue to work on. It's important that, so in, in terms of blunt numbers, in case you were wondering, currently, the budget for all graduate students is forty-seven thousand dollars. That's at the current rate, all right? This would bring it to about a hundred forty-seven thousand, all right? But also fifteen point five percent is taken out immediately for an administrative fee because our Brooklyn College Association charges everybody that receives that funding fifteen point five. So it's not actually a hundred forty-seven, it's gonna go down to one twenty-one, okay? So we're now playing with a hundred twenty-one thousand, what are we gonna do with that? Right, and so to, to this committee's points, while a hundred twenty-one thousand sounds like a lot, we still have to use that for all of the graduate activities plus the, the actual operating cost of student government. You know, I have at least two clubs now that are requesting ten thousand and twenty thousand dollars respectively. So right there, that's thirty thousand just for two clubs, right? This is the type of funding that is, that is lacking, right? And that is needed, it's, it's not optional, right? I believe since nineteen ninety-seven, we have been subsidizing the theater department at Brooklyn College. Okay, the department, we've been paying for those productions. That money doesn't come from them, they are still getting cut, right? And again, you, you, you heard that we are an award-winning department. We're doing cool things, but then they're cutting the budget anyway, right? So we need to supplement that and subsidize that. And we've been doing it for twenty years now. So, you know, the truth is, it's not just us helping ourselves. We're, we're actually also helping subsidize the operating costs of Brooklyn College in some ways, all right? These are things that are coming out of our pocket when normally some of these things might be coming out of the department expense. So, and also like, I don't know if this is a bias or not bias, but I was originally a music performance major, I'm a classically trained cellist. I started in our conservatory. And I know that the operating and labor costs of our arts is, is, is higher, right? So it's, it's an understanding of just, there's a lot that needs to be done.
Yes.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, if you want to talk afterwards, you're right, there are a lot of workshops. I saw, there's a, I think at my college, you know, colleges do their own, but I think sometimes the Research Foundation, they also do workshops. The question becomes, how does a student apply in relationship to college? Which obviously could be figured out. But I think not only is it a good idea to, to begin to do that kind of work, but folks who find themselves in fields where that's the way that they subsidize what they do, you'd think we would teach a class on that. But strangely enough, you know, that's one of the things that gets missed in both undergraduate and graduate education, which is how to actually support your dreams. So if you, again, we'll, we'll speak afterwards, I'll give you my contact information. Let's see what we can do to find, for both things like the National Science Foundation and the National Endowment for Humanities, which are the ways that we, where we get support for STEM and the arts.
Yeah, I think coming out, if you're studying anything in the arts, you should probably be taking some courses in Copland, the School of Business, because you need to know how to raise that money, fundraising. There should be a fundraising one-on-one, fundraising two-on-one, fundraising three-on-one. I mean, to give you an example, we have a program now partnered between Fierstein Graduate School of Cinema and the Copland School of Business, right? Because, you know, even the filmmakers need to know how to raise the money. And so that partnership, that new program, I'm very happy to hear about. And we need to see more of that because I would love to see our graduate students become successful alumni and for them to know how to, how to fund and raise this money.
Yeah, in the arts, I always recommend marrying rich.
I mean, I don't know if we can offer a class on that.
Speak to me later.
Last year, were you about to say something, did I just?
No. On there. All right, so I guess we call for a vote.
Not right now. For what it's worth, I appreciate all the attention that the graduate students are getting. We feel like the stepchild sometimes to the undergrads because we're only twenty percent of the population. But I, I have to say for the record that it's been a lot of fun working with our undergraduate counterparts. And that is more, we need more of that, right, to work together as a team. We're all students, and it's, it's been a ride, but it's, it's been a productive and positive one this year, so. Thank you.
Based on the update from Vice Chancellor Maybank and Ian James, Brooklyn College made an error in the amount presented in the resolution for approval. Accordingly, I move to amend item one B two to change that the fee be resolved that in paragraph to one hundred dollars and seventy cents rather than eighty-eight ninety-five. In the chart where the allocation on the line item were detailed, change the total student activity fee line to a hundred dollars and seventy cents rather than eighty-eight dollars and ninety-five cents. On the same chart, change the fee for student government line from forty-one seventy-five rather than thirty dollars. Change, exchange the explanation, relieve, reflect a hundred dollars and seventy cents rather than eighty-eight ninety-five. Do I have a second? Rather than eighty-eight ninety-five, do I have a second on further discussion?
I second the motion with the approved changes.
What did you say?
I second the motion with the approved changes.
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Any abstention? Now we move for approval of item one B two as amended. Do I have a second on any discussion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, and you opposed? With no more action added?
I abstain.
Yeah?
I abstain to the motion.
You abstain? You wanna forget that I can vote too? I, I abstain and, and volunteer before the board. To assist in looking at where, if not approved tonight, where you can get additional dollars, especially federal dollars. Because I probably know somebody who could, who could write a grant for Brooklyn College. So that this burden doesn't come on the students, so I'm committing myself to that. But I, I officially abstain. Any other items? No other items, may I call for?
Did the referendum pass, I think everybody's wondering.
Did you have something to say?
So it passed?
It passed.
Yeah, it passed.
Report from Vice Chancellor.
I'm going, given the time and being long spent, I'm going to defer on my report, I will submit it with your permission, madam chair. As a written report, we do, we do have a student who was to present. Um, and so I would like the indulgence of three minutes. If we can do that, so that Ren can present. Um, Ren Velez is a BMCC STEM scholar. Who is going to tell us about the uptake of gold. She was unfortunately unable to make it to the full board meeting because of the MTA delay. But she is here today and we don't wanna miss this opportunity to hear about the uptake of gold, so you got two minutes.
Okay, uh, well, good afternoon, everyone, I wanna start off by thanking the board trustees, uh, Vice Chancellor of CUNY. Um, Vice Chancellor of CUNY, Dr. Maybank, um, the Vice President of Student Affairs, Dr. Craig. Uh, the President at BMCC, Anthony Navarro, Ian James, um, for giving me this opportunity to share my research project. Also, to introduce myself, my name is Ren Velez and I'm a current student at the Borough of Manhattan Community College, also known as BMCC. Um, I'm majoring in geographic information science and I'm also a club president for the Research in Nature Club. A student representative on the Climate Coalition of Lower Manhattan and a former CUNY, uh, research scholar. I love science, nature and technology and my future plan is to continue my education. And research in order to one day become an environmental scientist, or at least to work in the environmental, um, field. Uh, currently, to my luck, I work alongside my research mentor, Dr. Navarro, who is a chemistry professor at BMCC. Um, at the Science Department and whose research focuses on bioremediation and finding novel ways to clean up heavy metal toxins. Um, from the water or recently precious heavy metals such as gold. So for our, uh, year, for our, um, year-long project, it focused on addressing one key issue in gold mining. That is the process of gold extraction, which is the way which gold is captured from large chunks of rock or ores containing gold. For some context, gold is a highly sought-after and desired metal, which has had its uses throughout the centuries. Not only does it have uses in jewelry and within, um, banks, gold also plays an important role in electronics equipment. Even jet aircraft engines, for example, uh, and this is due to gold's superior electrical, electrical conductivity. And the resistance to corrosion. So, as is demand for gold continues to increase due to its important uses and applications and also because it is a luxury item. It is a luxury item that has many uses in jewelry and pop culture. Um, the search for new mines, less expensive extracting and purifying techniques are of top concern and priority. So gold mining companies, many of which aren't regulated in many parts of the world, continuously have many constraints and dangers to capturing gold. Many of which people don't know about. In fact, since the twentieth century, gold has been extracted or captured using a hazardous cyanide or mercury solution. In order to dissolve or leach free gold particles onto gold ores. This is highly problematic and dangerous because cyanide and mercury are toxic chemicals. Known to have adverse health effects in humans, such as kidney damage, brain damage, lung damage, cancer, birth defects. Permanent disability and even death. The environment and animals alike also suffer catastrophic effects as the mercury mix is then, um, burnt out to retrieve the gold. Thus letting out toxic pollutants into the air, water and soil. While there are many other options available, usually costly and not as accessible, such as certain clay modifications. Our research aims to address this issue by evaluating the potential of brown marine algae as an eco-friendly material. And sustainable absorbent for the uptake of gold. Uh, we focus on using bioabsorption, which is a physicochemical process that occurs naturally in absorbent materials such as fruit peels. Um, teas or forest residuals like tree bark. It uses dead biomass to concentrate and bind, um, uh, to concentrate and bind contents. Onto the cell structure of the absorbents being used. We hypothesized that the use of saltwater algae could be a good absorbent for capturing gold. Um, as it is easily available, abundant in nature and contains many polysaturates. That will allow for the easy finding of gold onto its structures. Shortly put, in order to test this hypothesis out, we conducted various batch experiments, um, by creating stock solutions of gold. We also prepared our marine algae, which my mentor, he collected in his home country, Peru. Um, we then washed the algae, identified their species and then dried them so we can further have the material in a powder version. Batch experiments were also carried out in duplicate at room temperature, combining variable masses of, of both marine algae. Which we named L thirteen and S twelve. Effects of initial solution pH, absorbent dose, initial gold ion concentration and salinity were studied. One at a time by changing only one experimental parameter. The morphologicum and textual properties of both marine algae were also studied, um, using scanning electron microscopy, also known as SM. Which is this really cool and powerful microscope, and lastly, blank samples were also used to compare results. So now what are we, what can we infer with this information? Well, using Leichmer's equation to model and explain the absorption, we can conclude that based on all the results, we see good max absorption capacity. With L thirteen being the superior algae absor- absorbent, um, compared to L twelve. It also shows that marine algies are most effective around the pHs of four and five in order to collect the most gold. Scanning electron microscopy also indicates that L thirteen and S twelve pose favorable. Morphological and textual properties for the uptake of gold ions. Overall, what these findings indicate is that brown marine algae has absorption capacities. And is a good, sustainable and cost-effective material for the uptake of gold. It is also easily biodegradable in the environment and serves as a natural, um, bio, bio, um, biodiesel fuel. Future research might also include making these absorbents into biodegradable filters, um, in order to begin testing on a larger scale. But we hope that proposing algae as an alternative, we can then reduce mercury and cyanide exposure in the environment. And for being used, um, during the gold extraction phase, thank you for your time.
If you are interested in the uptake of gold, just get a CUNY community college student, they're golden.
I think I can call the other.
Yeah.
Now we can. Motion to adjourn.
May I get a motion?
Second.